This is the September 15th, 2020 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the secretary's report from August 25th. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, then, we need a motion.
I make a motion to accept secretary's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the budget.
Yes, so you have a snapshot as of yesterday. So that includes payroll through this week and all of the bills received up until yesterday. And we haven't received any since, so it's a very up-to-date budget with a total of 27.4% spent for the fiscal year. Unless you have any specific questions, it hasn't changed much since the last meeting. So I don't feel I need to go through anything, but certainly if you have any questions, please ask.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's see.
You need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
I was looking at too many things here. Yes, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I think it's just one of those days today.
I hear ya.
Okay, next on the agenda is the reopening plan, or excuse me, the phased reopening plan.
Yes. And so as you'll remember, back in June, the board did approve the phased reopening plan. And stage two involves reopening the building in some capacity. Part of the possible services for stage two is limited access to the building by appointment only and for computer use only to start. And I've spoken with our town administrator, as well as the Board of Health agents, and have run my ideas by them, and they both support my desire to move forward into stage two and to get the critical service of computer use available to our public once again. I'll just go through a couple of things really quick before we have any discussion or questions you might have, just to kind of see if we can answer some of those questions first. I did send you an updated computer use policy. I thought because our existing computer use policy, a lot of it wouldn't apply necessarily. So I thought it was a good idea to have an update to the policy put into effect before opening. That way, we can eliminate any potential problems from that end. As you know, in the guidelines for use, the computer sessions have to be by appointment only. The appointments must be made in advance by calling the library. Upon arrival at the entrance, patrons must be wearing a mask or face covering that covers both the nose and mouth. We do have masks here. So if we, if a patron arrives and does not have a mask, we do have extra masks available for them to use, and they will be required to wear that mask or face covering at all times while in the building. And of course, must maintain six feet of distance from other patrons and staff. On the time limits for computers, we normally offer a two-hour session per day, but we've cut that to 45 minutes per day. With the caveat also that I can raise or lower the time limit depending on availability for the day. We would make it very clear to patrons before they make the appointment what the time limit would be. And if a patron arrives after the scheduled appointment's start time, he or she may not get a full 45-minute session, and we would make that very clear to patrons when scheduling the appointment. In terms of fees, we will, we've been printing and making photocopies for patrons if they come to our takeout window. And we've been doing that for free since June when we started takeout. But we do need to get back into charging the very nominal fee that we do charge for printing. So the cost for printing would still be 10 cents a page for black and white, 25 cents for color, and patrons must have exact change. There is a way that we would be able to accommodate larger print jobs by actually putting a bill on their library card for the print job. I say larger bill because there's an 85-cent fee to pay a bill online. And if we were to put the charge on someone's account, and then they went online to pay it, I wouldn't want them to pay for a 10-cent print job 95 cents because they have to pay the 85-cent fee to pay online. So if they've got a larger print job that, you know, is, say, $1.85, when we bill them, we could take the 85 cents off when we put the bill on and just bill them $1. So they'd still be paying $1.85, but it, we wouldn't be charging them almost, you know, double or, you know, any additional, because we're certainly not looking to do that to anyone. And then finally, the other change that I made to the existing policy is that laptops would be at the discretion of me or whoever's in charge in my absence, in my absence, and it would follow the same guidelines for use and time limits. The reason why I say that is we currently have five public PCs available plus the four laptops. So potentially nine people could be in the building using the computer at once. But we have to drop from five computers to two to ensure the six feet of distance between the computer stations. We actually have about seven, seven and a half feet between the two furthest computer stations with the three in the middle removed. And depending on usage, we might need to reevaluate how to serve more people. So maybe we add in a couple of laptops, and we set someone up in a different area of the library with a laptop. You know, or we could potentially bring in, you know, one or two PCs and put those up somewhere else in the library. But to start, it would just be the two PCs. And again, if we felt that it was safe to set up a laptop somewhere, we could do that, you know, on a given day, any given day. We do have sleeves for the computer keyboards, sort of like a silicone sleeve. It's much easier and better for the keyboard to disinfect a silicone sleeve versus disinfecting an actual keyboard, especially because our plan is to leave disinfectant at the computer terminal for the patron to disinfect the keyboard after use. So, you know, the staff and I, when we're disinfecting our keyboards, we are sometimes disinfecting right onto the keyboard. But, you know, a patron might not be as familiar with how to do that without damaging the keyboard. So we have the sleeves on the keyboards, and they can wipe, you know, the sleeve without damaging the keyboard itself. We also have the option to swap out keyboards between patrons if that makes anyone more comfortable or if it makes staff more comfortable even. We have currently eight additional keyboards that we could swap with. We can also swap the mouse between users. So we will swap the mouse between users and then disinfect that separately. We have at least a dozen mice, so we're ready for that, too, I think. We will have a hand sanitizing station right at the front entrance, and we will encourage people to sanitize their hands before and after using the computers. We also have, we will have one bathroom open to the public, and we will encourage people, if they want to actually wash their hands, that they could certainly go into the bathroom to wash their hands. And, yeah, I think that's about everything. As you know, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to do this today or tomorrow. I would like to do it before the month is out. But we do have a few things that still need to happen in the building before we actually let the public in. But we could be ready to go with this, you know, as soon as those things get taken care of. So that's why I wanted to make sure that, you know, we met so that we could review all this and also to, you know, answer any questions you may have or concerns you may have, and then also to have you approve this update to the computer use policy. So that's about all I have, but please, if you have questions or concerns, please, you know, yes.
My question is, what hours will you, what hours will you be providing the computer use?
So, for example, on a Monday, we do takeout from 11:00 to 7:00. Staff is in the building from 9:00 AM until 8:00 PM. So our thought is to have sessions available on the half an hour starting at 10:30. So it'd be 10:30, 11:30, 12:30, 1:30, 2:30, 3:30, 4:30, 5:30, or 6:30 on a Monday. Or that would also qualify, apply to a Wednesday. If someone books the 10:30 session for that Monday, they have the 45 minutes. We would then not schedule someone for 11:30. It would wipe the 11:30 out as an option. That way, if the person who's scheduled for 10:30 arrives a few minutes late, we can still give them the 45-minute session that gives us time to disinfect, to have them disinfect, to also have us disinfect the area once they're gone, and to sort of reset for the next person. So if someone books that 10:30 session, it wipes out 11:30, and the next session would be 12:30.
Gotcha.
And then we would follow similarly, you know, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. The Tuesday, Thursday takeout hours are 1:00 to 7:00. And staff is in the building typically from 10:00 to 8:00 on Tuesday, Thursday. So we would not do the morning sessions because we're typically not open to the public before 1:00 on a Tuesday or Thursday. So I don't want to set the precedent of having someone come in to use the computer at 10:30 on a Tuesday, Thursday, unless we were to change the library's hours, which I'm not looking to do right now. So this first session, I believe, on a Tuesday, Thursday, we said would be 1:30. And then the sessions available would be 1:30, 2:30, 3:30, 4:30, 5:30, 6:30. And then Friday and Saturday, because we do short, you know, shorter hours on those days, we, you know, only have maybe two to three sessions a day. But again, we have two computers, so that's potentially six people who could be using the computers on it, even though we're only open for four hours on either of those days.
Have you had a lot of people asking?
We do get phone calls for it. You know, there are people who need to fill out job applications. There are people who need to apply for social security benefits or unemployment benefits. And it's very difficult to do that from a phone. I mean, the misconception is, you know, we've discussed so many times before, is that everyone has internet access. But just because you have a phone doesn't mean you can easily fill out an application or, you know, anything critical like that on a phone. So, yeah, sure, a lot of people have smartphones and that, you know, have internet access if they have Wi-Fi or have a phone that doesn't require that. But when you really need to fill out, especially with an online, an online job application is so difficult anyway, but it's so much easier to do it. So we aren't hearing from people that they're, you know, it's this or nothing. But we're hearing from people that, yes, they would like to come in for those, for those reasons. I mean, I'm sure there are other people, too, who just want to come in and browse the internet, because browsing the internet can be a lot easier on a PC than on a phone. But we are hearing people who are, you know, actually saying, you know, "I don't have a way to fill out this application or to apply for unemployment." And, you know, that's, it's one of our critical services is so that we are available. You know, the other piece to that is, we're a public library. So we serve anyone in the state of Massachusetts and, you know, I mean, beyond if someone were to come in. So the other thing that, you know, and this is, you know, what I try to say this carefully. It's not just, if it were a matter of just opening up the doors and seeing what happens, we would have opened the doors already. There's so much thought that has to go into this because it's not just residents of Acushnet who will be coming in to use. We don't ask somebody when they call and say, "Hey, I need to use a computer." And when they call and say, "Hey, I need to use a computer," and we say, "Well, great, let's schedule an appointment." We're not going to ask them where they're from. And Acushnet might be low in the cases for COVID right now, but we are right next door to, you know, as a resident, the great city of New Bedford, which unfortunately is in the red zone. So we have to be super careful about how we proceed forward with any decisions. But certainly with this one, because it's, it's not, you know, when, oh, here's Steve. Let me admit him. So that's, anyway, I just say that to say that, yeah, we have been getting a lot of phone calls. I don't know who they, I don't know if they're Acushnet residents. I don't know if they're... Hi, Steve.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
That, oh, that's okay. That's okay. We're just discussing the, you know, reopening for computer use. And I'm just saying how, you know, Diane had asked if we've been getting phone calls, and we have. And, you know, I think also to backpedal a little on my, an explanation of this, too, is if we decide to do this next week, let's say, I'm not going to advertise it right away. I want to sort of test it out. If somebody calls, then we can say, "Yes, you can come in and use this." And we'll sort of test it out and see how it goes with them before we make a push to advertise this to everyone. Because the other piece that we have to keep in mind is that there is no library on this part of the South Coast that is open yet for any coming-in services. The closest one is Lakeville, but New Bedford is not open, Rochester is not open, Natapoyset, Fort Haven, Marion, Wareham, nobody down this end is open. So I also don't want the onslaught of, you know, people coming here because there's no other, Dartmouth isn't open, I forgot them, because they don't have anywhere else nearby to go. So we have to be really careful in thinking of that, too, which is why it's so limited to start. Because I wouldn't want to put a service out, as we've said all along, and then, you know, a week or two later, find out we have to backpedal and stop the service. So, but that was a really long answer to have you been getting phone calls. Yes, we have. We also get a lot of questions at the takeout window. We also hear from a lot of people who want to come in the building to browse. And I just, I have to, you know, ask everyone to understand that we just aren't there yet. There is, again, no other library in the immediate area that is open for browsing. I totally understand that you want to see what's available and make the decisions, you know, yourself on what you're reading. And we try to do that as much as possible for people. And I think the majority of people who are using takeout are very happy with the service that we're able to provide for takeout. And, but I get that that missing piece is there for doing the browsing and picking out your own books by browsing. But we can't be the first ones to go from this area. We're too small. And we have to test out with the computer use first, I think. It's also the timing of schools now just reopening, you know, to open our doors to a great number of people at once, potential great number of people at once with schools just reopening, I think would also put us in a difficult spot. So.
I would have to agree.
Yeah, definitely.
Baby steps. I think, I think you're doing the right thing.
Well, and we've sort of done everything that way, you know, all along since March. Everything's been gradual, and it's gone well. So hopefully, it just continues to go well, and hopefully, you know, the numbers will stay, you know, where they're at or lower, and be able to discuss, you know, reopening the building for more than computer use soon. But, you know, that, that was always the thought in every discussion that we had, that the first thing would be computer use by appointment to start. So I definitely would like it to stay that way. And I think that's something that the staff is most comfortable with. When, I mean, this is something the staff and I talk about almost daily. I don't see everyone every day, obviously, because not everyone is here every day. But when I do see people, I mean, that's, this is, we're talking about this all the time. And no decision or even thought, you know, is taken lightly. Everything that, you know, I take them into consideration with everything I think about doing because I don't want to do anything that makes anyone uncomfortable, you know, coming in here. And I don't want to make a decision that affects eight other people that are unhappy with the decision. So, you know, everyone's heard this plan. They all, they all know the ideas, and we've had discussions. And I will, before, you know, we put this out to the public, I would for sure sit down with all of them and, you know, individually, again, with the staff, and make sure that everyone understands what we're doing and answer any questions or concerns, you know, that they may have so that we can work that out before, in the public even knows we're ready to go with, with computer by appointment. Any other questions? I appreciate the questions or thoughts because you might think of something that I'm not thinking of, like, or you might have an idea that, you know, we haven't, we haven't thought. I mean, we're all still very active in webinars and taking part in, you know, different online, you know, things where a lot of us are in chat groups discussing this and hearing about what other libraries are doing. So we're all pretty in tune with, you know, what seems to be working for people, what's not working for people. And, and so we're, it's, again, that's, we have a lot of research that we do. And it, I don't know, sort of, since there's no answers, really. Our thoughts may be on it change every day as we get new information or different information. But we're all very actively paying attention to what's going on. And, you know, I think we're, we're able to make informed decisions and have, you know, be ready to go with this as a result of that. But again, you, you all may think of something that we haven't. So please, if you do think of anything.
I haven't thought of anything.
Okay.
I think you covered it all.
I don't know. I, I would hope so, but, and then, like I said, we would, the people who are scheduling the pickups for takeout right now would be the people scheduling the appointments. So I have four staff who are, you know, sort of, there's three staff plus myself who are in charge of doing that. So the four of us would continue to do that. We would use Google Sheets the same way we do to schedule takeout. We would use Google Sheets to schedule the computer appointments. We already have a draft sheet ready to go of, that we've all taken a look at to see that's something we think would work for scheduling. Also, so they'll be aware of what's happening. And we'll lay it all out to people on the phone when they make the appointment. And whoever greets them at the door will, you know, sort of reiterate everything that we've talked to them about on the phone. And I think by doing that, you know, we lessen the chance of any confusion or, you know, if they know what the expectations are before they even come in, I think it'll, it'll certainly help, you know, to make sure that they're following what our expectations are.
I agree. If nobody has any other questions, we can vote on updating the computer policy.
I make a motion to accept the update on the computer policy.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. I don't, director's report, or do you have any announcements?
I didn't send you any report, as you know. But I do have a few things I just wanted to mention real quick. I'm nearly done with the financial report, which is the second state report. That's due on October 16th. I just have a few things I want to finish up with that or review before I say that I'm done. So hopefully, by the next time we meet, that'll be done, and then I can review it with you all. It doesn't need approval, so we don't need to meet before it's submitted. And I did send you the August statistics. I think, yes, I did. I had them done in time. And I just wanted, you know, to point out, we're, we've seen continued growth in takeout. Actually, as of yesterday, we've now circulated over 5,000 items through takeout. So we hit, we're now at 5,040 as of yesterday. So that was a fun milestone to reach. But seeing the growth in that has been great. I think a part of what's helped us see some growth in that is that we've created some book bundles for families. I'm not sure if you've seen any of that advertised on social media. But we have fall, back-to-school, and Halloween-themed bundles of five books that, you know, families can share. There's picture books, some nonfiction books, and early readers. A couple of chapter books mixed in there if there are older kids who are looking for themed bundles. And people seem to be pretty excited about those. So that's helped with takeout since we've started doing that. And then we've seen continued growth in the use of our e-collections. And if you take a look, you know, if you compare to last year, 558 eBooks through Libby and Overdrive this past August, while last year it was 269. So, you know, that's double what it was, and I don't see that changing. I think that's here to stay. And, you know, we don't know exactly who is using, you know, that service or hoopla. You know, we know it's our, we know it's a cushion of patrons, but, you know, I'm not sure if it's people who are also borrowing physical items through takeout or if people are just, you know, exclusively using the eBooks and not using takeout. Whether or not, you know, they had never read an eBook prior to all this, and now they're, you know, loving the ease of using eBooks. I'm sure there's a mix of who the users are for that, but I don't see that dropping. I think that's, you know, definitely something we're going to need to be keeping our eye on and continue investing in in terms of how much of our budget goes toward electronic content in the future. But other than that, those were the two notes I had of things to share with you.
I have comments? Yeah, when I'm looking at the stats for the month, it looks like the children's and the young adults seem to be taking the biggest hit of minimizing the circulation. And I just want to add that your staff is incredible as far as picking out children's books for me. And I just remind people that if they just call the staff and say, "I need some books for my six-year-old or five-year-old," they do a great job of going through the stacks for us, picking out something. And maybe young adults, too, I'm sure. You've got people available that could help them if they're looking for something to read in a particular subject. But not to hesitate to call the staff. They're awesome. I can't say enough good things about them. They keep me with reading material for their grandkids through FaceTime, so.
You know, I can second that. A few weeks ago, I asked for books. I said, "We've been doing a lot of nature walks."
Yeah.
So I asked for books. They gave a six, and he was so excited about every one of them. He had opened everyone before we got home.
Oh, that's awesome. Good.
Good.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you both. That's good to hear. We do have a good crew here, that's, that's for sure. And I know there's a lot of, you know, somebody fills out a takeout form or calls with a request or, you know, some people also email in. But there's some discussion that happens amongst each other, you know, before someone goes off to the stacks to find, you know, "Hey, can you think of anything off the top of your head?" Or, you know, sometimes, you know, I'll be in my office, and I'll over here, and I'll stick my head out and say, "Hey, did you think of this one?" Or, "Did you try searching this way?" or whatever. But I think that's something that's really important to highlight is the fact. So I'm glad that you mentioned it because we always offer what we call reader's advisory. I mean, that's something we always do as librarians and library staff. But we're getting to do it at a level where we haven't done it before. So, and especially for some of the part-time staff who, you know, are maybe only here eight hours a week, they're now getting to provide it in a way that they certainly never have. But we're all, I think, being challenged with how to provide the reader's advisory and trying to know a little bit about, you know, who the person is who's requesting, even if it's just, "How old is the child?" What, you know, what's their reading? Are they reading on their own? Is it, you know, or is it this shared reading? What's happening? Just to try to sort of get... Just to try to sort of get those answers so that we can make good choices. And I think the more we have the experience of it, certainly the better everyone's getting at it. And I think that, you know, that's going to help us well into the future. Once, you know, we're not doing takeout anymore and people are coming in the building, I think the staff is going to really want to continue doing that for people as much as possible. So I'm glad to hear that's working for people. We've gotten some lovely emails from, you know, adults and not just people with kids and, you know, or, you know, families that they're sharing books with, but from adults too who have been, you know, maybe never had read a particular author, but someone mentioned it and now they love that author or they're, you know.
Let's be.
Yeah, so it's, it's great. We just had a takeout form this morning for someone who was looking for large print books for their 95-year-old mom. And she gave us some descriptions of, you know, what her mom was looking for. And, you know, Cindy went right out and made, you know, pulled some things and then gave her a call. So, I mean, it's so simple to fill out the form or to call us or email us. And the turnaround time's pretty quick because, you know, unless there's only one or two of us in the building when you happen to reach out, but the turnaround time can be pretty quick. So I'm happy to hear that it's, it's working well. And, you know, unfortunately, one, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but eventually when we do open the doors for browsing, I don't know that we're going to be able to maintain takeout in this quite the same way because we just have a very small staff. And I think, I think a lot of people will, will miss it the way that it is right now. I mean, I think they'll be happy to come in the building too, but I think it's pretty cool to, you know, hey, I'm going to go over there and pick it up and all I have to do is walk up to the window and then, you know, get my handful of books and I go in my car and I'm off, you know. Have a little chat at the window and, you know, be on my way. So, but, you know, I think we've, we've certainly learned a lot through the, doing takeout and I think it's all, you know, for the most part, been very positive. So I concur on the staff 100%. Like a proudful moment. It's like the momma got a compliment on her kids.
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
All right. Unless anybody has anything else, we can set the next meeting date.
Let me open up my calendar. I had some potential dates. They're not on my piece of paper that I brought in. Let's see. Where are we? Oh my gosh, what year is it? I know, I know. All of a sudden, I'm like, wait, why does my calendar look weird? There it is, 2020. Okay. I think that, given the fact that, you know, I think we're still at least a week or so out before dipping the toe in for coming in for computer use. I'm imagining we wouldn't need to meet again until at least October 13th, like within that week or even the following week. Or if you don't want to push it out that far, then certainly we can look at the week of the 5th, if you'd like to keep it at a, at a tighter or closer schedule.
The first week, the week of the 5th, I won't be here.
Okay, so let's use that as a reason not to entertain the week of the 5th. And the week of the, it's technically, technically the week of the 12th, but we're of course closed on the 12th for Columbus Day, but then I could do the third, anytime that week probably. Or the following week with that, Tuesday, the 20th would work too.
Tuesday, the 20th is better for me.
Okay.
But I can make the week before work if it works for everybody else.
Doesn't matter for me.
You want to say the week of the 20th? I mean, excuse me, say the 20th and then if something comes up, I'll just be in touch and we can maybe schedule something a little sooner?
Yeah.
Does the 20th work for everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to still do noon again? Noon works for everyone? All right. So we'll go with Tuesday, the 20th at noon unless, you know, like you said, there's something else comes up.
Okay. That's great.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
All right. So if we have nothing else, we need a motion.
No one wants to leave.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
This September 15th, 2020 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 12:40. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.